Welcome to tonight's Pickle City Commission meeting. I would need a motion to adjourn from executive session.
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, we are adjourned. At this time, we have a presentation by Echo Hills Golf Course Manager, Patrick Kirkland. Good evening.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. Have a few things to hand out for you folks. Can you report on how we did this year versus last year? Revenue speaking. Commissioners, this is something I'll talk about later on.
We'll share.
And everybody, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm the general manager of Echo Hills Golf Club here in Pickwa. I know I've been here a few days here, so it's not sure. So I'm just here tonight to talk about how we did this year. This is our first full year with the city, working with the city of Pickwa at Camp and Golf. I'm an employee of Camp and Golf and everyone else on courses. We work directly with the city of Pickwa to manage their golf course. It's been a great year. We've had great weather, which always helps. Not a lot of rain this year. If you remember when I was here in the spring, I believe April, I announced my goals for the year. And just a recap of some of those goals that I brought to you was to increase our rounds played with the addition, with the additional purchase of 14 golf carts and rebattering our fleet. And my goal was ambitious. I said my goal will be 30,000 rounds compared to 19,000 rounds last year. And we, we almost got there. My other goal was to increase our top line revenue 25%. To increase our food and beverage offerings and revenue. To increase the value of our memberships, thus increasing more memberships sold. And to increase our logo, our new logo and the presence within the community through merchandise offerings, effective media and our social media presence. And then to start addressing some of the issues that the foundation of the course has, which is drainage, cart path deterioration, fencing, et cetera. So to review what we were able to accomplish this year. Our top line revenue was at 919,000, which is a 37% increase, so we beat that goal. We had 20, just over 28,000 rounds. We still have another month to go, not anticipating too many more rounds played this year for obvious reasons. But we could still hit 30,000 rounds if we had a great December. So that's a 30, 30, 30% increase in rounds played. We changed our menu significantly. We added pizza. We worked with Pickwa Pizza Supply, so if you've never had our pizza or how they recommend it as they call, place in the order to go. And our food and beverage revenue in total is up 120,000 in revenue, which is a 35% increase. Revenue, merchandise revenue is up 43%. And the main thing that we were able to do this, or why we were able to have the gains that we had this year was because of the purchase of the 14 golf carts. Last year with only 36 golf carts, we had to block many, many tee times. So we, we had availability of carts where people came to play. So this year with the purchase of the carts, we did not have to block any tee times. And it made a significant difference, just as I promised it would. The challenges of the season that we had was cart and course abuse. We are a public facility. We, we don't, you know, we don't have a very strict dress code. And we, we allow everyone to come and play at golf course. And with that being said, you know, we get some folks out there that don't have the best intentions of our golf carts or our course in mind, or come out there to have a good time. And so we've had some carts damaged, quite a few in the month of July. And we've had some greens damaged from golfers taking divots out of the green, which is a huge damage. And it affects not, it affects everyone else that plays after that golfer. So what we do now to try to remediate that is we scan driver's license. If you're going to rent a golf cart, we're going to have this driver's license on file for you. That way, if there's damage, we know where to send the bill. And then we've asked for volunteer rangers and starters to help monitor the course. And with that being said, since we started putting those into play, we haven't had too much. So it's something that we'll continue to monitor, but that's some of the challenges that we've had for this year. We've lost a lot of trees this year because of storms. We had a sinkhole in a pond that we fixed and we have some algae on that same pond that we will be addressing next year with, with a purchase that we have planned. And then the Canadian geese and their droppings is still an issue that is going to take time to resolve. If you remember, and you can see, pull this up on our website, this was our calendar of events. And I'm currently working on this for 2024. The people that, the folks that get our emails should get this before the beginning of the new year. My goal is to have this submitted to my marketing team by the second week of December and then into your hands by the, by the beginning of the new year. But the feedback that I received was that everyone really enjoyed getting this heads up calendar events, so they can kind of make their plans around that, right? You want to play in this event or that event? Well, I was going to go to this function, but maybe I won't. I want to stay and play this event. So that's had a lot of positive feedback. And again, that's about building value for our members. Some of the events that we did this year was our annual junior golf camp. We had 37 participants. And the kids were great. They're from all, all the surrounding schools and they ranged in age from eight to 17 years old. It was five weeks every Wednesday. Next year, the plan is to have that all, that camp all in one week, just to make it a little bit easier on, on everyone that works the event. Five weeks is a lot, lot to require of your volunteers. So we're going to have that camp all in one week next year. And there's some of our volunteers there. Mayor Cindy Pearson, thank you for helping out with our event, so.
I enjoyed it, thank you.
Couldn't have done it without you guys. So another one of our very popular events was Glow Golf. We invested into some of the LED flag sticks, cups, markers to mark the course, green, you know, from down the fairway, blue around the water, tiki torches around the water, red LED markers around the bunkers and white markers to show the 150 yard mark. We had a best glow outfit and best glow cart. So as you see there in the photo, we had some folks that really went all out and dressed up their golf cart for the event. It was a sold out event. We had it both times or both, we had it twice this year. The first one was for, it was a couples night. And then the second one was, was open to everybody. It was a great time and it was, it was a lot of fun. We look forward to doing that again next year. And best of yet, no golf carts ended up in a pond, so that was really good. That was my fear and everybody was, did a great job taking care of the course and the carts on those two event nights. Thank you. Here's another photo from the Glow Golf event and some more photos. So these were by far our two most popular events. Like I said, they were both sold out, so we're looking forward to doing that again next year. We started having some couples golf events and we did a fun event on Memorial Day weekend called a Steak and Dog Tournament. The winning team, it was Ryder Cup format, so you had two very large teams. The winning team had steaks and the losing team had hot dogs. So it was a lot of fun. We also hosted our first wedding reception and it was, it was a great event. The, you know, our clubhouse cannot hold, you know, large gatherings. I wouldn't say no more than 100 people, but it was a small event and, and a small wedding reception. And the lighting was just right, the music was right. And so it was, it was a good event and I've had all positive feedback from that event. And here's one of our starters this year. So the importance for, for non golfers, so you understand, the importance of having a starter is that before anybody comes onto the golf course, they show their receipt to the starter. And then at that time, the starter, you know, makes sure that we're pairing up a twosome and a twosome or threesome and a single. That way we're sending out foursomes onto the golf course. And the reason that's important is because it keeps our pace of play where it should be. So again, we get more rounds through the course and the overall satisfaction of golfers is at a high level if the pace of play is good. If you have a single behind a twosome, behind a single, behind a threesome, that makes for a long day on a golf course. So we got to send people out in foursomes and as busy as we were, it was very important for us to do that. And then they can also tell if we're cart path only that day. If we have any other rules or restrictions that we need to communicate to the golfer, that is the perfect time to do that. So this is something that we'll continue to do and we'll be looking for more volunteers to help with this. So I appreciate all of my volunteers that have helped out this year. It made a, it made a big difference. We partner with Callaway and Srixon as our two main vendors. And so we had two different demo days for each brand where they come out and you get to try out all the new clubs, balls, et cetera, get fit for clubs and then go ahead and make a purchase right there. So both were successful events. Some improvements that we've made to the course, since we have some cash flow now, is we've started working on our cart paths, repaving them. The plan this year is to address holes one through five. We're also going to be working on some drainage issues on the front. And then next spring, we will finish the front nine, six through nine for the cart pass. This area that you see here where dirt and then the sod down there was, was really an eyesore next to the clubhouse. And so we, we dug all that out, graded it and then laid some sod down and it really just, just makes the area look really nice. So just little improvements that, you know, each year we keep doing those. We already have a great golf course. This golf course is, is a, is a facility that the residents of Pickwa should be proud of. Not many municipal golf courses offer the challenge that this golf course does. And I would highly encourage you, if you don't play golf, to, to try to get yourself back into, or get yourself into the game, excuse me. It's a great municipal golf course, one of the best that you'll find in, in around. We're missing one photo on this slide, but one of the things that we wanted to do with our food and beverage, besides just expand the menu, was expand how you can order it. So if you were to scan this QR code, it would take you to our online menu. During season, you can actually place an order and have food and beverage or golf balls and tees delivered to you anywhere on the golf course. There's no course within three hours that offers this service. And my menu is, is on this other side here. Right now, we have delivery turned off because obviously we're not very busy. But you can still scan that QR code. You can go to our website and click on that link. It takes you to our menu. You can place an order and then pull up to our roundabout to pick up your, your food items. You'll see more of that next year being marketed to the general public, just not just our golfers, because we're going to start expanding our menu even further. And we want you to order your pizza from us and not, you know, pizza at other public gyms, right? You want to support your local golf course, support your local business. Like I said, we partner with Pickwa Pizza Supply. They have great products, really good pizza. I live in New Bremen. There's not a lot, a lot, excuse me. There's not a lot of places to order and eat food from in New Bremen, but the Bollin Alley in New Bremen has a lot, a large menu. So we order from the BDA, from the Bollin Alley and it's, it's, it's great product, it's good food. So memberships, past benefits were to play more. As you play more, you save more. We wanted to address this by adding value. In '22, we had 92 memberships and this year we went up to 117 memberships sold. The value that we added, besides just the improvements that I've already went over, was changing it to where the public has seven days and then the membership has 14 day access to the tee sheet. Member only events, we have one tomorrow called the Par Three Tournament. Myself and another member set that course up today. It's going to be a lot of fun, some different, different looks that, that nobody has ever seen before on the golf course. So I, and then our, obviously our Glow Golf, Shambles, et cetera. And then our full members receive 10% off merchandise and their gin handicap included, which is required for league play and other tournaments that we have. The proposed changes that you have on your, your bench there is going to be adding another tier to our membership, which we will call a premium unlimited. We currently sell these punch cards and this punch card is something that a lot of municipal golf courses do, but it's becoming a thing of the past. And so we want to start having an all included membership. You pay one fee upfront and then you're covered for the whole year. So the single adult would be 1950, but that includes all of your green fees, all of your cart fees and your range balls. So no more range, no more punch cards. You just pay one fee, you don't get nickled and dimed every time you come out to, to the golf course. The last price increase that we requested for a membership was in 2019. And I'm sure as everybody's aware, prices on everything has gone up quite a bit the last five years. But our expenses continue to rise like everything. Last year, we spent 41,000 in chemicals to maintain our beautiful golf course and next year it's going to be close to 58. But with these, these proposed increases on rates and memberships, we are still competitive with other courses in the area. And then some more on our memberships here. We're talking 25, 50 bucks here. Limited membership and unlimited membership, these do not include your golf cart. You still have to pay for a golf cart, you still have to pay for driving range balls. So $4.75 for an adult limited and then that per round fee goes from six to eight. I have data that if you request, I can give it to you, but I have data that shows that the limited membership really affects our APR. And it is, is, is a membership that we don't need, but we have a large section of our membership that has this membership. So we don't want to eliminate it right now, but we have to address the, the cost of it. And then our single adult unlimited, again, does not include cart fees, will go up to 9.50 from 8.25 and on down the list there. As I talked about earlier, we want to expand our, our Echo Hills logo and brand. That is with new market or new merchandise. And with the holidays coming up, if you have a golfer in your life that you plan on shopping for, I encourage you to shop local. All of our prices are at Dick's Sporting Goods or just below. A lot of golfers or a lot of people don't buy from golf courses because the golf courses charge a lot more than a Dick's Sporting Goods. We don't want to be that way. We want you to shop local. We've, we've have agreements with vendors where our margins are just as competitive as Dick's Sporting Goods, so we can offer those rate, those prices, so you can buy your balls, gloves, hats, shirts, tees. You can buy them from us and not online at Dick's Sporting Goods. And that's it, thank you. I'll be back in the spring to kind of go over some more goals of mine for next year and to talk about what I've worked on this off season. But we're looking forward to a, a good year next year. That's it.
Well, I want to say thank you very much for your hard work.
Thanks.
And I know it's a challenging year and you met those challenges. And I'm, one other thing, will there be golf lessons provided?
There is golf lessons, yes, as my schedule allows. I'm currently not a member of the PGA. I was recently accepted to the PGA and this off season I will be working on my, my bookwork, my course studies, so I can become a member of the PGA. With that being said, I've, I do give lessons. I've given lessons in the past. If, I talked about my, my background when I was here in the spring, but I have a, I, I do many, many lessons, yes. But really as my schedule allows.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
How do we handle schools that use the golf course for inter-school cooperation, inter-school competition? How's that handled?
Yeah, we host three schools, Pickwa, Covington and Newton. And so I partner with the coaches to make sure that they have time available on the golf course to have their matches.
They pay a special fee or how does that work?
They do. So at this time, Newton is the only school that pays. And I've had the conversation with the athletic director from Covington and Pickwa that they can no longer have free golf at the golf course, they have to pay. So the rates that I've sent to the athletic director for Pickwa and Covington is the same as Newton. So it's 2,500 per school and that does not include range balls. And, but then we, Pickwa still has priority on the tee because this is obviously Pickwa's municipal golf course. But we, we make it work and hosting three schools is a challenge, along with our league play and our golfers that are, it is a challenge. The month of August and September are really hectic at the golf course. But we've, we've made it work pretty well this year and we could never go to four schools, I can tell you that.
At some point, will your reports show total expenditures versus total revenue?
Yeah, and that Amy or someone from the city can pull our budget status report and give that to you. Yep.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks for coming. Good job.
Thanks. I gotta go, thanks guys.
Okay, it's now time for a public comment. Sorry, we have to do consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes from November 7th meeting have been approved. It is now time for public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city commission on agenda items. Comments are requested to be limited to five minutes.
Mayor, I move to amend the agenda by moving public comment to after new business.
After new business?
Yeah, back where it used to be.
I'll second it.
Is this second?
Sure.
Is there any discussion?
It, it used to be after new business. It seemed like people liked that. When it got moved to before new and old business, it seemed like people got disrupted by that change. They had anticipated, speaking about the, the new business after the new business had been discussed. I know there was a, somebody had said last commission meeting that they had wanted it moved back to that time. I know when I was a citizen, I wanted it moved back to after new business. It seemed like a model that worked for a lot of previous commission meetings and it was a recent change. So I'm just moving to change it back and open any other discussion about it.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please? Yes. Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner Hunt, Uffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
No.
Commissioner Vetter?
No.
Oh, it's a tie.
I don't know what happens after that.
Remember three, Tom, always remember three.
All right.
For anything to pass in Pickwa, you have to.
Thank you.
Well, with one thing I do know is that on each topic that we bring up, people can come up and.
Yep.
Absolutely. Yeah, you understand.
January's coming, so things can change. No, it's not time for that. Are you doing public comment?
Yeah, if it's for your public comment, then you can.
Is it your public, yes, okay, yeah.
Public comment.
We're doing public comment now.
Public comment, you can come up, that's not a problem.
Okay. Jeff Grimes, 1341 Maplewood Drive. So my first question is, this gentleman that spoke about the golf course got 20 minutes, okay? And so my second question would be, did the golf course make money this year?
And that's why, that's why I asked for the, the total expenses versus.
But we don't know that tonight, right?
We can't find out.
We can find out as soon as the year close out, we'll have a report.
And my question is, if the golf course didn't make money, the reason that we got rid of the swimming pool is because it didn't make money. So I feel that the younger generation or the ladies or whoever frequenting the pool have been overlooked in our town once again. And then there is such a thing as in, let's see, 2011, the city entered into source water protection. And so what I found was potential contaminant sources for the source water protection. And the number one source was the golf course. So I'm really worried about our drinking water. And the city entered into this source water protection program. If you want to look it back up, it was in 2011 with a company called CDM. And then we also had the cemetery, the airport. And so I'm just concerned about how many chemicals are being used and whether or not the golf course makes money. And if the golf course loses money, then how come the swimming pool wasn't allowed to lose money?
We won't know until the books are closed out at the end of the year.
Did it make money in 2022?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't, I don't think it did.
What about 2021?
I don't know, it was COVID, no.
So like I said, one of the reasons for getting rid of the swimming pool is because it didn't make money. But the golf course is allowed to lose money and we can spend recklessly on that. So I think the swimming pool should be something that the city should have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Anyone else?
Eva Silvers, 319 third. I've been reading a lot about how a small group of citizens may be causing damage to the city. So let's talk about it. I want nothing more than the city to come together. But I think everybody needs to understand a few things. In order for that to happen, there has to be trust and there has to be truth. And I'm going to be honest, not you, not you. But as far as every other leader in this room, I'm concerned about the truths. I'm concerned if there's even a reality to truth. And I say that because we have a lot of things going on that don't coincide with what paperwork shows. Not just with the battery burns. But I'll give you a couple of other examples, just that way I can make it real clear. We talk about businesses come into. We talk about businesses come into this community. We're putting in a 90-room hotel in a place that a hotel was. I've worked at all three of these hotels in this community. Not ever, not ever, not ever are these hotels booked to capacity or even half capacity unless it is country concert. There are no events here to, to sustain them, but here we go with it. I talked to Jason Moore at the Cricket Handle. The man put his faith in the city and he opened a business. And I know you guys are going to blame it on COVID. But Lock Nine was promised to be completed. Vedder, we can talk about this because you was at this meeting when Wood Street Lofts went in and the developer for Wood Street Lofts went in. Can anybody tell me why that man gave $25,000 on the pretense that there would be a senior division?
I don't think I understand your question.
It's not a question. It's fact.
It's a statement.
No, it's a fact. I, I, I can go get the man. And he'd be more than willing to come talk about it. There are things like this. It's deception. And that's the problem. We come here, we're told we'll get answers later. If we do get answers, they're contrary to what the first answers were. And then we bring things to you and we're told one thing and it's another. If we're going to bring businesses in, let's not make promises to companies and businesses just like the condos. They're paused. Why? We keep promising people that want to come, want to invest in this community, things that you guys cannot make happen, don't promise it. Don't promise it. It is that simple. Be honest. Because I'm really at a loss that we are all the age that we are and we're having a hard time figuring facts from fiction out. This is not complicated. It's honesty. You guys talk about integrity? We have in one meeting 100 people's names given that volunteer for this community, correct? 100 people that take time out of their work time, their family, they come and invest in their community. We have people that show up here when there's issues and have been showing up. Yeah, it hasn't been going on for years, but I can say for the last year, from the rental program till present, it has. People are interested in our community. Shunning them's not going to change that. Come January, there's going to be change guaranteed. Question I have for the city, all of the city officials are. When that change comes, because I have a feeling that Paul, Frank, Tom, and Chris are going to have some integrity. And I have a feeling that as they are our elected leaders, they're elected, which means they have a little bit more power than everybody gives them due credit for. But what I highly suggest is that if you want a community, stop acting like it's a high school clique and have a community.
Thank you, Eva.
Oh, one more thing.
Oh.
November 7th paperwork was out. These kids need updated paperwork for their class.
Come up here and say that. I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
The paper I picked up was dated November 7th. These kids are here for their class. They're going to need an updated version.
I'll correct that. I apologize.
We'll get it for them.
It was me that put it out.
Appreciate that, Eva.
Chuck Stewart, 4244 Deming Road. The agenda, as far as the voting on this, you've only got four of you here to have this start of the meeting, start of the end of the meeting, the open comments. I think it should be held off till the next commissioner shows up so you have an equal chance. It's not right to take a vote on something.
Not, not to steal your time, but it's, it's just a motion. So it's not like a bill that I was, or a resolution I was submitting. So I can just motion in two weeks again. So hopefully we'll have our fifth here and I'll, I'll just keep motioning until it happens. And part of my reasoning for that, in addition to what I had said previously, was I think the citizens should have the final say in a citizen meeting.
Yep, they should. Thank you. That's exactly right. The budget, has any of you people seen the budget on the agenda tonight, before tonight, before, before yesterday? Have you saw the paperwork and you had time to look at it?
Not in detail.
Huh. I can't believe you, you don't understand what's going on. The golf course don't look too profitable to me, but anyway, the 24 budget you're looking at, I don't think this group should, I think you should hold that off till the next commissioners come in and let them work on that. The, the emergency order tonight.
By December 31st.
Huh?
I think the budget has to be approved by December 31st.
Not the 24, the 24 budget?
The 24.
The 24 budget? Why?
State law.
Really? I don't know why it would be, whatever. The 23 budget, it's always emergency order, so I don't understand why you have to do the January 24 budget.
If I understand correctly, the, the 23 is to kind of pad what we messed up calculating last year. And then the 24 budget, as we're trying to pre-plan that instead of post-planning it.
Right, but, but you won't be here to activate that later. You will, you will. The rest won't. The three of you. So anyway, I think that if you look at these proposals where you're taking monies out of these funds, and I brought this up before, transferring from the general fund to the park board to whatever, but it never comes back. And I don't understand that. Then you've got this investment policy that you got tonight. So we've got all this extra money to invest, but it doesn't say how they're going to put the money back. What, if they do make money, I, are they going to cut a utility bill or are they going to, is it going to come back to the citizens? It's their money. How's it going to work? I don't see anything clarifying that, so.
We'll clarify.
It's hard, it's hard to talk about the agenda here because you've got 10-eyed reward on this thing. There's no way we can, we can talk about the agenda. It's illegal in my book to even try to do this. You take away the rights of the citizens, which are your bosses. And I don't understand why you cannot understand the citizens have a right to their voice, their opinions on what they want this city to be. And that's what, that's what your job is to represent the citizens. I can't understand why you can't see that. That's when you run for office, that's what you talked about, right? I want to make it a better place. We will never make it a better place without the citizens. So I'm not going to go on on this because you guys have been hammered enough. I know that. But I just wish you would think about what you're doing before you act. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Hey, just to hopefully make you feel a little bit better about some of those ordinances that are up tonight, I believe it's the first reading on most of those, which means that they should have up to three readings on those unless we suspend it. So you should have up to four more weeks to come up and talk about it for most of these ordinances.
Good evening, Valerie Mulligan. I live on Pickwa Clayton Road. I also run a business here in the city of Pickwa. I want to first thank Mayor Pearson for joining the Chamber of Commerce and coming to the ribbon cutting for Operation Veteran and Caregiver Support on the 9th of November. We really appreciate you coming out and seeing what we're doing. It's a, it's a work in progress. With that in mind, I represent a community of people that work to defend our nation. And our veteran community sustains a lot of physical and emotional damage as a result of serving our country to defend our constitution. With that in mind, we can guarantee that the population of veterans today will all suffer some form of disability. Most recently, we had this Lock Nine project going on and the Cricket Handle moving in. And I heard from a couple of people that they did not feel comfortable crossing 36 at Water Street to be able to go to the Cricket Handle. And I have to be perfectly honest with you, in the dark, an able-bodied person, it's pretty scary. A person in a wheelchair may not be seen and may not be able to get through that intersection quick enough. And doing the Lock Nine project, I think you're doing a disservice to the community of people with disabilities by not having handicap accessible parking at the corner right there of Water and Main Street. That also brought me to an evening where my husband and I, thank you, spent driving around downtown Pickwa. Because see, a couple of months ago, I was here and I was supposed to work with Ms. French, who is no longer here, and I have nobody to work with now, on making Pickwa a handicap accessible community. We should have 10% of our public parking available for people with disabilities. We should have very clearly marked parking places for van accessibility. We have none. We do have some handicap parking, but we have none that is marked van parking. And we are at about 2% instead of 10%. So by the American Disabilities Act, our city is failing our people with disabilities. Now, I represent a small demographic, but more than 65% of this community could fall into that capacity at any given time due to the age per capita in the city of Pickwa. It is really vital that we do better everywhere. I will tell you that we were at Fa, or excuse me, we were at Pitsenberger Park. And there is a shelter at Pitsenberger Park that used to sit behind, well, it still sits there, but where the pool is, it sits behind the pool, behind the bathrooms there in the middle of the parking lots across from the baseball diamonds. And it's a beautiful shelter. We were there that day and we watched this woman on a walker trying to get through the grass back to her car. It's the only picnic shelter in Pitsenberger Park, by the way. There is no accessibility to that shelter. That violates the ADA, folks. That has to be fixed yesterday. You need to have a sidewalk there. You need to have a curb ramp that goes to that particular shelter that is not existent there. You also do not have parking in many of the other parks that are, that is accessible. Pitsenberger has always been a challenge, particularly with the soccer fields. We need to be looking at that. I don't know what we're doing is a park board. I'm going to address that. But I will tell you, accessibility in this community really has got to be addressed and we've got to do better. There's no reason we shouldn't have a handicap parking place in each of those quadrants at Main and High in that area. There's no reason we shouldn't have handicap accessibility at the parking lots.
Your time's about to expire.
Sorry. Anyway. Listen, you know, I get it, time's running out. But time doesn't run out until I die, until you all die. And y'all want to have accessibility, I promise you. And we can make Pickwa better. We used to have it and we don't have it anymore. And I don't know why, but let's get together and work on this, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Simmons. Mary Simmons, 500 South Downing Street. I'm a United States Marine and I'm also 100% disabled, permanent and total. Do I look disabled? That's not a fair question, but do I? There are days I can barely walk. There are days I can barely move. Yeah, I do my best to get around. And what she's saying is correct. The streets down the main street, I get it's a road, but there is no area, no real area to get out of a car if you're disabled safely. There is no real area in the parks. And like she's saying, sometimes my son wants to go play at the park, but getting through that grass and up those mounds, it's, it's tough. As a disabled person, you really have, the city has to do better. Because think about Troy. Troy's post office has no disabled access. That is known. It's just steps. And I used to live in Troy and I would struggle. That's when I was walking on a cane. I would struggle up those steps. So that's not you. That's Troy. But that's just an example of areas that need to looked at, be looked at. Please, on behalf of disabled veterans, disabled people, period. We, especially with the veterans, we served our country. I'm sorry, I'm going to say it. We served our country.
Thank you for your service.
No, we deserve better.
Yes.
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Simmons, 215 McKinley Avenue. No relation to Mary. She's a nice lady.
You sure?
So I'm going to continue the banner a little bit about the ADA. But I have a question first. Who was responsible for planning the open house that we had at the Pickwa Library?
That would be me, sir.
That would be you? Okay. So I showed up there and I thought at first, you know, the, the commissioners were going to be treated better than the citizens. And then Commissioner Vedder showed up and he looked just as surprised as I was that we were down there waiting for an elevator until 5:00 PM. And people were stacking up in the lobby and people were stacking up in the next floor up. And in order to really get up there in time, as a patient with COPD, I got to climb three flights of stairs. Now, fortunately, I had no need for an oxygen tank when I got to the top or an AED. But I was rather wounded and I wasn't able to stay long because I did not feel very well because I had to climb three flights of stairs. And yes, I took the elevator down. It just seemed as though it was disinviting and confusing to the citizens, to the participants, and especially to the media who were trying to provide some answers to. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I think we can do better next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in January. I will.
Roland Sarmo, 660 South Street.
Hey, Roland. How are you?
Good, sir. A man owned Cricket Handle got hold of me one day. We had a meeting. Was he, there he is. He said all you did was lie to him when he spent $2 million moving in this town. You promised him Lock Nine is going to be done before you open the doors. The city did. Am I right or wrong? You want to get him up here and see who's lying?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine with me, buddy. I, I swear to God, that's what he told me. We would never moved in this town if they didn't promise him that would be done before. And we didn't even have the money to do it at the time he come in this town. We had to borrow, what I heard. And let me see what else I said. Oh, I can't see all these taxpayers' money we spend to hire every, how much, how many millions of dollars of our money going out of town hiring people to come in this town and run our town? That's our taxpayers' money. They should have to be in this town. Because as this one guy says, I said, you don't get along with nobody. I don't have to get along with nobody. I just come here to do my job. That ain't no way a guy should talk to some out of town, come in this town, making our money, to go live in $300,000 home. That's our taxpayers' money we're spending this. And I don't believe in that. I talked to Frank about it the other day, matter of fact. I don't believe in that. That's our money. How many millions of dollars going out of this town to pay somebody living in $200,000, $300,000 home? Like that golfer from New Bream telling me how good they're doing. What did we, what did we just give them $400,000, $500,000 if they're doing so good? If they're doing so good, why we just giving all the money? I mean, you got, I see it on the wall. I mean, I'm a businessman. We're going to go bankruptcy before it's over with. You just can't go out and spend a million dollars here to meet. Now, sooner or later, you start spending money, you go start borrowing money, just like a home, you borrow money, you got to pay it back. If you don't pay it back, you're going to go bankruptcy. How are you planning on paying all this money back? Every time we have a meeting, you're getting away a million dollars here, a million dollars here, $2 million. You can't do that. And we're talking about handicap. I asked Pickwa why we don't have a handicap at the post office. That ain't government regulation, they said. Government don't have to have, which I disagree with that, but that's what the guy told me to pick a post office.
That's really.
That is, that is, because I ask him about, I go in there, buy stamps, why don't we have a handicap out here? Government property don't need handicap on their property, they say. Check into it. See if they're right or wrong.
I would have.
I'm, I'm serious. A lot of people call me and talk to me. We have meetings with and everything because they know, I got business in this town for 20-some years. I don't want to see this town broke, but you can't keep up the Joneses. We're trying to keep up the Joneses, Troy and Jones Cindy. Well, it ain't going to happen, people. We, you just can't do this overnight, just like a young kid thinks he needs a $50,000 car overnight just getting out of high school. You just, you know, you just, we, we let this town go for so long, it's pathetic. And all of a sudden, man, we're going to spend a lot of money where we ain't got to spend. We don't have enough money to spend in this town. I've been in this town for a year, 50 years or longer. I've known you for 50 years, probably.
At least.
And I'm about the only one. But I'm saying, you know, you guys don't realize, we're going to go bankruptcy. Mark my word on that. We're going to go bankruptcy before this is over with. And that's because we raised stuff so high people can't afford it. People can't afford it. People can't afford it. Anytime you guys get this, that, whatever, I'm wasting my time. I wasn't gonna say nothing tonight, but that guy from New Bremen playing golf here, I don't know what he makes, I can find out. He's, how much of tax money going up there? He don't live in this town. I think if you, you get a job in this town, you just have to move in this town.
Unfortunately, the law is different than that.
Huh?
Unfortunately, the law is different than that.
Well, we got some smart people in there, we got a lot of smart people out in this, back here talking. We ain't all dummies in this town like you guys think we are.
No, I don't think you are.
I know you don't. I know you don't. Everybody thinks I'm a dummy. I ain't no dummy. Money, we don't know how to manage money in this town. I can see that, and I just started coming to meetings, and I can see it. And you guys, you look at me like, what the hell you talking about?
Thanks, Roland.
Hi, Diane Park Brunson. Is it okay if I talk to you, Fire Chief, please? Okay. In 2018, we opened the new training center at the old water plant. Can you tell me the number of hours and training for our first responders?
I don't have that with me for 2018.
What's that?
For 2018.
2018, 2019, I mean...
I'll have to get into our software, it has a training records component of that.
Can you tell me how many Bowling Green students came through each year and got trained?
Not at the moment.
Is there any this year?
Ma'am, it'd be, it would be easier if you want to submit your questions, we can give it to team and get the response for you because he doesn't have a documents.
Gosh, I just thought you could get on a computer and look it up.
No, I'm...
Okay, since you want to take me away from him, can you tell me what Pickwa Energy Storage Research Center is?
I'm sorry, what do you...
You don't know what that is?
What are you saying?
It's, it's a Pickwa business. Pickwa Energy Storage Research and Testing Center. It's located at 9300 State Route 66.
Energies, speaking of energy, Storage Response Group, ESRG?
No, I'm talking about the business we have. It's on our federal EPA website. The owner is Pickwa, Ohio.
I don't know what...
What's that? Oh, well, the contact is Tom Benson, but you have no idea what Pickwa Energy Storage Research Group is.
It may be.
Pickwa has a business, and you don't know what it is?
We don't have a business named that.
It's on the federal EPA website.
That doesn't mean that it's our business.
Pickwa Energy Storage Research, this came off the federal website. Full name, City of Pickwa, operator, and it even gives our address.
I think you're confusing the site owner with the consultant that was working on the site.
And here it gives the next one, and it says Tom Benson.
That was a consultant that worked for Bowling Green State University Fire Academy.
Can you tell me what ignitable waste is?
I have no idea what you're referring to, or what, what is your point?
We have a business, we have a business, that's my point. When did we get this business? What year did this start? I mean, the city, you know, we're citizens, shouldn't we know about a business?
Tom Benson from Bowling Green.
Tom Benson was a consultant that worked for Bowling Green Fire Academy. We do not have a for-profit business.
It's listed.
It's, I think you're misconstruing what the listing is, ma'am.
You didn't even know what it was?
Correct, but it, I have our finance director sitting across from me, and I have our law director, and I can tell you that our incorporation is for not-for-profit.
You didn't sign the contract for $600 a burn, but yet your name's on it, so I, I'm probably asking the wrong person. Who was the link for testing lithium ion batteries?
Talking about how it came to the city?
Yeah, who was the link for it?
It was presented to me with the idea, and then presented to the city commission.
It was presented to you by who? Who's the link? Would that be Bowling Green Fire School?
No, I was introduced when I was at a specialty class over at Columbus.
Okay, your emails that we received said Bowling Green was the link.
Your time's about to expire.
For testing lithium ion batteries with the research group. These were your emails, and it says Bowling Green. Just letting you know, since you didn't know.
Diane, your, your time is up.
Yeah, it's still, it's not up.
Yes, it is.
Ma'am, can you leave us a copy so we can look into it for you and get it back to you?
Who, who all was on the MOU? Was ESRG ever on the MOU or a joint usage agreement?
Your time is expired.
All these years, were they ever? Were they only just on a lease this year in September? No what? Were they ever on the MOU?
They weren't on a lease in September.
They only got a lease this September? They were never in the MOU? I know you have to keep on looking at them, but I'm sorry. Were they ever on the MOU from 2018 to 23, ever on MOU or a joint usage agreement?
Diane, your time is up, please.
I feel bad for you, you have to look at them.
Have a seat.
That's terrible. I need my paperwork.
Thanks, Diane.
Can you give Paul, can you give Paul a copy? He said he, he wanted a copy. Okay. We can make a copy if you like.
It's on toxic Pickwa. Yeah, it's on, it's on toxic Pickwa.
My name is Alicia Lang, I live outside of the city.
What's your address?
6480 North Troy Sidney Road. Fire chief, chief, if you don't mind, I've got a few questions also. So you said that you were introduced to this idea in Columbus. Was this at a conference?
It was a specialty rescue training.
Okay, who, what was the name of the training? Do you remember?
Trench Rescue, I believe it was.
Trench?
Yes.
Okay. Do you remember who the organization was that approached, did they approach you, or did you approach them?
I was approached by them. So the, the class, the group that was putting on that class was the one that approached me.
What was the group's name?
Rescue Methods.
Who was the representative from Rescue Method?
Dalen Zartman.
What do you know about Dalen Zartman?
He's a specialty rescue instructor.
Has he been here?
I'm sorry?
Has he been to Pickwa?
Yes.
What did he do when he was here in Pickwa?
As far as...
What, what was his business here in Pickwa?
He came and looked at the facility out there on 66.
Okay, what, what date do you know? The, what was the first day, the first date that he was here?
I don't, I don't have that date.
Well, so the first time that, so Dalen Zartman approached you at a fire seminar in what year?
That would've been 2017.
2017, okay. Does Dalen Zartman have any other connections to this area that you know of?
To this area?
Yeah.
Not that I know of.
Okay. So what, he was here, what business dealings did he do out there? Was it with you, or was it with, who was it with, and why?
It was the interest in possibly doing specialty rescue training.
For what organization?
For Rescue Methods.
Under what, just Rescue Method?
Yes.
Okay, and so how did it change from Rescue Method to, where did it go from there? Where did it go from there? So how did it go from Rescue Method to ESRG? How did that transform, transpire, or Rescue Method to BGSU Fire School? Is it because he is on their fire board, so he brought them in, or...
I don't know what his representation would be if he's on a board or anything like that with BGSU.
Yeah, Dalen Zartman is on the BGSU Fire Council, they're, they're bored over there. He's also with ESRG and Benson Fire Safety and DN VGL. So how many times do you think that Dalen Zartman has been here?
I wouldn't have that number.
Was he ever here and met with anyone other than you?
As far as city officials?
Yeah.
Yes, he had met with some other city officials.
Who? Who do you know?
It would've been our former city engineer.
What, who specifically?
That would've been Amy Havner.
Okay, and what do you think that they would, were discussing?
Well, it would've been the possibility of what the old water plant could be as far as fire rescue training.
Okay, was any money received, like did he bring any money to the city?
No.
No? Was there any, are there any contracts, other contracts with Dalen Zartman, or any of his associates with the city?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. What, why was Rescue Methods not, why was that initiative not entered in upon? Why didn't you go into an agreement with Dalen?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow your question.
When he came here to talk about Rescue Methods and like starting something, why didn't you proceed with anything with him? What?
Well, they did, they did come and do specialty rescue training out at the facility.
And then what did they do?
Your time's about to expire.
Okay. What, what happened after that?
I'm sorry, I'm not following where you're wanting to ask the question.
Okay. So, it's fine.
You sure? Do you have any other, anything else you want to say?
Can I email you?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Alicia.
Thank you.
Jeff, you've been up once.
That was about the golf course.
Yeah, during public comment, you can only, you can only come up one time during public comment.
I got questions about the lithium ion batteries.
You can only come up one, one time. I'm sorry, please have a seat.
The longer you guys stall this out, the worse it looks for you.
We're not stalling anything out.
Then let me talk.
You should've talked when you were up here the first time.
I wanted to talk about the golf course.
You can talk about it all during your five minutes. Please have a seat.
Are you kidding me? I can't talk about something else.
No, sir, you can, you could've talked about it when you first came up, you could've. You get five minutes.
I've got two different questions.
Then you can say them both during the first five minutes. Go ahead, go ahead and have a seat. No?
Okay. Anyone else?
Let's move on.
Okay, we're going to...
Wait a minute.
Good evening. My name is Larry Hamilton. I live at 1104 Maplewood Drive, and I am only one, but I am one. I can't do everything, but I can do something. What I can do, I ought to do, and what I ought to do by the grace of God, I will do. I wanted to come before you to talk about not only black history, but also talk about November serving as the month for National Native American Heritage Month. And I wanted to bring that to your attention because of the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday that we're going to be celebrating. Each year since 1990, the president has proclaimed November the designated National Native American Heritage Month. Congress chose the month of November because this is generally the end of the traditional harvest season and a time of Thanksgiving and celebration for Native Americans. There was a tie-in with the Randolph narrative, and I wanted to make sure that people understand that there are some, there's some carryover associated with some of the experiences that many people have shared this evening, and the realization that there are people who are players who have a significant influence over decision-making in the city of Pickwa. I refer to those people as being a part of the cabal. Some of you may have some other terms, but I know that what they are saying exists in terms of those kinds of efforts on the part of businesses and people in positions of influence associated with those businesses having to do a great deal more than elected officials in this city of Pickwa. Now, I'm gonna go around and move on because I have some other things that I had wanted to deliberate on, but I wanted to bring to the attention that the Native American Heritage Month is very much tied to the Randolph narrative. And in 1942, there was the creation of what was called the Emblem Institute, not far from New Bremen. And that came about as a result of some earlier contacts with people in Cincinnati who rioted and who forced the removal of people of color from Cincinnati who relocated in Mercer County. The people who were there in Cincinnati who came to Mercer County were led largely by a man by the name of Augustus Waddles. He was very much interested in establishing a school for black children and Native American children. What a lot of people don't understand, the year 1846 is significant, not only in terms of the arrival of the Randolph freed people in Mercer County, but it's also a time period when the Miami Nation, the last tribal nation in Indiana, who was also in Ohio, was forcibly removed by the United States military to a new reservation west of the Mississippi River.
Your time's about ready to expire.
In present-day eastern Kansas. However, not all Miami, Miami Indian people were removed to the Miami Reservation. We need to be about knowing whose we are in terms of our historical narratives. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Larry, I might suggest that if you ever get the chance to head down to Oxford, Miami University has a fantastic museum for, for the Miami Tribe there.
I don't live in Oxford, I lived in Pickwa, Ohio.
Oh, I know, I'm just...
And Pickwa, Ohio is the location of the descendants of the Randolph freed people, and they also refer to those people in terms of Pickwa being a hospitable place. Now, they weren't talking about Pickwa in general, they were talking about Pickwa specifically in association with New Bremen or Mercer County.
I wasn't trying to detract from your, your points or anything, just trying to...
Places where, where Miami Indians...
Thought, thought it was friendly advice.
My, my point is that we need to build something here in Pickwa.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Neves, 1012 West Green Street. I'd like to know if Pickwa Police ever did any pepper spray training out there? I'd like to know if Pickwa Police ever did any pepper spray training out there?
We do OC training. We, our training building's over there, it's the brick building, the block building. And we have done OC training out there, both in that building and then also the, our treatment plant was abandoned. Internal office in there for OC training, yes.
Did Pickwa Police do any, any, any burning out there?
No, we have never done any burning out there whatsoever, of any.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay. We'll move on to our old business. Resolution number R dash one 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 dash twenty-three was postponed. And I believe that we will be putting it back on the table, so we would need a motion.
I move to put resolution R one 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 two three back on the table.
Second.
Or to table it, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number R dash one 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 dash two three has been put back on the table.
Good evening, Commissioners. Passage of this resolution will allow the city to enact a new investment policy and will also allow for the engagement of a professional financial investment firm to manage the city's investment funds actively and appropriately.
Are there any questions from Commissioners or comments? Are there any questions or comments from our citizens? Jerry, this is basically a checks and balances for interest that's earned on our investments?
Yes, this will help us maximize those investment earnings. Looking forward to working with an investment advisor to maximize those earnings. And we need this policy in place to be able to work with them. As long as we have investments, we're required to have an investment policy and that has to be filed with the state auditor's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution number R dash one 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 dash two three?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution dash one one one, R dash one 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 two three.
Is there a second? I will second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain.
It's been. It has been defeated.
You can ask for a roll call on that, did you have?
A roll call, please. Commissioner Homan?
Abstain.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
No.
It's defeated. Moving on to new business, we have an ordinance number O dash one four dash two three. Emergency.
An emergency ordinance to make appropriations for the city of Pickwa, Ohio for the year twenty twenty-three.
We're required to present and pass the amended twenty twenty-three annual budget by the end of the year to ensure we're in compliance with budgetary law. This ordinance amends the annual appropriations ordinance to take into account changes that have occurred and to reflect more accurate year-end estimates. Normally, the commission passes this final appropriation ordinance at the last meeting of the year as an emergency ordinance. This year, we're bringing it a little bit earlier. However, we request that for waiving of the second and third readings and ask for passage of the appropriation ordinance tonight as an emergency to meet the year-end requirement. This will allow staff to make the changes in the accounting system in preparation for year-end.
Will there be any departments running out of money if we don't do this?
If, yes, actually, if we don't, then we'll be over budget in some areas and we'd be out of compliance and likely incur citations from the auditors in our twenty-three audit.
Is this a routine thing that we do, once a year?
It is, like I said, every year at the last meeting, and I look back for the last five years and it was always passed at the last meeting of the year as an emergency appropriation.
Are there particular departments that will, that would be running out of money or over budget?
Yes, there are some accounts that are line items that are over. Some of the changes that we are looking at would be for the, there were some of the activity that we had was the lock nine activity. We had the manuscript debt that we have to account for in this appropriation ordinance. A lot of these activities were already come before the commission, but now we need to clean up the appropriation ordinance just to bring the budget in line with what we've done. Another one is, for instance, the Aveiro company that we hired to work on our new ERP system and also to manage our IT department. There were expenditures incurred for that that we now have to increase the budget for. And we had, we've got a, right now, we've got a payment we're getting ready to make to the Spring Creek Township in accordance with an agreement that we have with them. Over the, we owe them property tax money from where we annexed land from them into the city. And so we owe them a certain amount of property tax and that was according to an agreement that was passed, I believe, last December. So we need to make payments to them. So there are a number of changes that we need to account for in this appropriation ordinance.
Do I understand that we're proposing to add one hundred thousand dollars to the golf account so that they can finish the year?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so the question that was asked earlier was, was are we making money on the golf course? And the answer is no. And the history over the last ten years, I think, would indicate that a significant amount of money has been extended at the end of the year to make sure that the golf budget reaches what balance or neutrality, I guess, the right term? Is that correct?
May I?
Yes.
So if you'll note, then in the transfers section, we're also lowering the transfer to the golf course from a projected four hundred thousand dollar transfer down to a one hundred thousand dollar transfer. So we did exceed expenditures that we had projected for the year, but because the revenue came in so much higher, we're, the transfer from the general fund is three hundred thousand dollars less. But you're correct, the golf course does not make money.
Yeah, and it hasn't for the last, what, ten years or?
I don't know that it ever has made money.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, if I may, just add on what our finance director is saying. So Jerry's been with us just for a brief period and during that time, he's identified areas where we've been on marginal compliance with the state auditor. It's gone back several years and part of that is that they've waited till the end of the year, they being previous finance directors, to make appropriations until the last meeting of the year. Our team and, and trying to stay not only compliant, but to be able to provide dashboard level information to the commission and the public, you'll be seeing him come before you more so probably even quarterly or more than quarterly a year to make sure that any adjustments that are made through the year remain funded in the, in the particular GL code or the department they reside in. So instead of waiting until the end of the year and then it's an emergency and we have to appropriate funds, it'll be more frequently as we get to that envelope where changes in what happens with the current operating environment require changes to our budget. They'll be brought to you sooner so that before the department, it becomes at risk of running out of resources that those resources are allocated, accounted for, and reported for our compliance.
I just guess that I'm a little frustrated when we ask a direct question and a citizen asks a direct question, commissioner asks a direct question, is the golf course making money? And we have to wait on a report, but obviously the answer is no.
Well, and I, I would again lean into that, that we're gonna provide a report at the end of the year and a lot of that has to do with the capital investments that have been made. So when you look at operating and maintenance versus capital, you know, we, we had Patrick talk a lot about the investments, the twelve golf carts, the rebatteries, things like that. So those will not be reoccurring expenditures. It was investments that we made to make revenue next year. So the anticipation would be that we will be in the black next year with our accounting and it will be making money. It's just currently, we're in a transition year where we've had to make, make those investments and we've also managed or migrated over to a managed service contract versus running it in-house. And I can tell you that having a managed service, it is more effective and obviously generated more revenue. So we expect better things in the years to come, but it's gonna take time to get there.
And maybe we're stuck this year, but next year, could you look into maybe doing like a six-month and maybe a nine-month review? So that, because we're still, I mean, it may be earlier than it was last year, but it's still listed as an emergency. Maybe some of these will be foreseeable at the beginning of Q four.
Right, and it, and it's gonna be more, a lot more frequent. And what you'll see, the, the departments are working on annual work plans that'll also coordinate with their budget document. So as we go out throughout the year and year over year, we're gonna be tighter to be held to the projects aligned with the resources available and if they don't, coming back and asking the commission for an adjustment.
Are there any citizen comments, concerns?
How much money are we having to allocate towards the lock nine that went over the projection for two thousand and twenty-three?
And again, the lock nine during the budget year and fiscal year twenty twenty-two was, it was an assumed engineer's estimate and those engineer's estimates have been revised based on the current conditions in the construction industry. And so this is very typical, it's not just with lock nine. When you talk about infrastructure projects, resurfacing, I'll give you a good example, we have a budget line item to resurface looney next year and if oil exceeds a hundred dollars a barrel, that estimate that'll be built into the budget will be antiquated and we'll be right back.
Absolutely understand that. I, I understand infrastructure, got a master's degree in public administration, got it. How much money did we have, do we have to put on this emergency fund to allocate to bring that budget in alignment? While he's looking for that, there was a question tonight regarding the public pool and its comparison to the golf course. You guys, the golf course is a beautiful facility. My organization does golf scrambles there, we have a, a great experience. But if we are running out of money, why aren't we closing the golf course one or two days a week like we used to do the swimming pool? When the swimming pool wasn't making money, people weren't there, we would close the pool. Eventually, the pool got shut down and it is now gone. It's an asset that takes away from the quality of life in the city of Pickwa. And I'm just, I'm concerned about the return on investment in this lock nine project. It's an open public park and we've got unicorn dreams on a mule budget. We do not have a return on investment on this project, guys. So I'm concerned about how much money we keep spending beyond that. And are we utilizing any public-private partnerships for this lock nine project?
Can you please define what you're asking?
So you're not familiar with public-private partnerships?
I am, and I'm asking, what, what do you?
What private organizations are involved in the public partnership of creating this park down on Water Street, the busiest street in the city of Pickwa that has no potential for return on investment? It is going to be just like our swimming pool and just like our golf course where we will have spent millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars really, to have this beautiful park, which I think will be an asset, don't get me wrong. I think it's great that we have that opportunity, but at the expense of taking money out of the utility fund to help fund it, to get it built, that's the expense of the citizens of this community. What public or what private organizations are involved in partnership in making this park come to reality so that we're not borrowing the taxpayers' money?
In terms of bringing money to bear, it would be economic development and you've seen two million dollar investment by crooked handle. Tens of millions of dollars will be invested across the street in the apartments. We have Artisan Alley and investments that are gonna be made in redevelopment between Winon's Roastery and the ATCS building on the corner.
Those are not public-private partnerships.
It's a partnership in that we built the park so that you have placemaking amenities that drive that kind of.
You put the horse before the cart.
Okay, well, you may see it that way, but when it comes to economic development, the developers wanna see placemaking so that they make their investment.
I'm gonna make sure you have my book, the Voynovich book on public-private partnerships.
I know all about those, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm concerned about that, what, how much money do we have to get?
The question with the lock nine project was that the money was just moved from, expenditures were moved from the park fund over to a capital projects fund. That's where we accounted for.
So we've, we've moved money from the park fund and from the utilities fund to?
What we created, what we did was create a capital projects fund to account for the project. So the expenditures are being accounted for in that capital projects fund, which is typically what you would use to account for a capital project. Also, the manuscript debt was receipted into that fund, so we're tracking both the revenues and expenditures in that fund. So, but that takes commission approval to move it from one fund to the other.
Okay, so in order to balance the budget, we have funds that are already allocated, but they're sitting in one account and now we have to move them to the, we have to approve to have them move from that capital account to the regular budgeted account in order to accommodate that, is that what I'm understanding?
It was, it was, it was just reallocating the money from one fund to another, which was more appropriate fund to track it from.
Do you reallocate your mortgage to buy a car? Do you, do you reallocate your money to buy a house, to buy a car? Do you reallocate your, your automobile to buy, to take a vacation?
As I said, in, in government, a lot of times it is appropriate to track a major capital project in a capital project fund.
About to expire.
It's, it's a type of fund used for that purpose.
Our infrastructure is in need of some serious reconsideration here. We are spending money that our taxpayers don't have the ability to pay.
Pray God, boys, pray God. She just sat there and said the golf course ain't made money for years and years and years and years. And the guy up here said we have a hundred and seventeen people play golf in this town, memberships. Out of this big town of twenty thousand people, we're sponsoring a hundred and seventeen people to pay to play golf.
That's membership.
That's a membership, that's what I'm saying.
But there's also.
That's a hundred and seventeen members, how many people's that? One membership per person, right?
But there are also other people who pay on an individual basis, so membership's not the total. So membership's not the total, the total bill.
But you got a swimming pool when it's nice out, you can't even get in, but they ain't making no money. But you get a golf course, Bob went and played golf all of his life down here. You guys all know, Bob talks to me, we're real good friends. They ain't made money since he been a kid, he says. And we're still doing it though. We're still paying it. Like I said, we're going to go broke. You sit there and look at me like, what are you talking about? You do, that's the way you look at people when they come up here. And people out here smarter than you people. I don't know about you yet, but I know you, but her, she a lost hog.
Is, is a lot of this money kind of already spent and we're just kind of, we're just moving it around to cover what was already spent? Or is some of it going to cover the next six weeks of 23?
Yeah, that's correct. We're just, the money is already spent. We're just adjusting the appropriations to be in line with what we spent.
So we already charged the credit card. We're just deciding if we're going to pay the bill at the end of the month? Gotcha.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to waive the three reading rule?
I'll move to waive the three reading rule.
Reluctantly, I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. This is the first, I'm sorry, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Homan?
Oh, yes, aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Ordinance number O-14-23 has been adopted.
It hasn't been adopted. We need to...
Well, it's just an emergency.
So now we gotta, don't we have to vote for the adoption of it? We just suspended the three reading rule.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance number O-14-23, emergency is adopted. Ordinance number O-15-23, first reading.
An ordinance to make appropriations for the city of Pickwa, Ohio for year 2024.
Commission members, we are required to pass a 2024 budget appropriation prior to year end. This will establish the budget for 2024 and give the city legal authority to spend money as of January 1st. There will be a working session meeting on November 28th at 4:00 PM in the administrative conference room here at City Hall, in which staff will discuss the budget with the commission in more detail and answer any questions that you'd have about the budget.
Any questions or comments from commission? Okay, any questions or comments from our citizens? Ordinance number O-16-23, first reading.
An ordinance amending chapter 94 of the Pickwa Code relating to the municipal golf course.
Good evening, commissioners. This is ordinance to adjust fees at the Echo Hills Golf Course. As Patrick stated in his report, the course has done much better this year. Revenue was up significantly. We did make some investments in the course for the infrastructure, the new carts, things of that nature in order to make money. Sometimes you have to spend money, so we did that this year. The course, as I said, we're looking at reduction of the transfer from the general fund from $400,000 estimated at the beginning of the year to estimated $100,000 at the end of the year. So that's a significant increase to the viability of the course. Of course, it is our goal that the course make money or at the very minimum break even, but you have to remember the course is considered, you know, as an amenity to the community. It's not unlike our other parks that we have that, you know, we provide these recreational opportunities. They do not make money either. So, you know, it is the goal to make the course profitable, and then one of the ways that we're looking to do that is by passing this ordinance to adjust the fees slightly. It's not a significant increase to any of the fees, and the adjustments that we're looking at does keep us in line with other courses in the area. So this would be the first reading on this ordinance.
Thank you.
And I would mention that the golf advisory board did review these adjustments and have recommended to city commission that they be adopted.
Thank you. Are any questions or comments from commissioners? Any questions or comments from our citizens? Ordinance number O-17-23, first reading.
An ordinance repealing Schedule A of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code and adopting a new Schedule A of the Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code relating to wages of certain municipal employees.
Good evening, commissioners. Schedule A covers the salaries of our full-time, non-union employees. We've adjusted the cost of living for 2024. This has been applied, and the wages for certain classifications will be adjusted in an effort to support organizational efficiencies and operations.
Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Questions or comments from our citizens? Ordinance number O-17-23, first reading. Ordinance number O-18-23, first reading.
An ordinance repealing Schedule A 1 of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code and adopting a new Schedule A 1 of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code relating to wages of certain municipal employees.
Yes, thank you. Schedule A 1, this pertains to our part-time seasonal and our temporary employees for the city of Pickwa. These wages for classifications will be adjusted in accordance with the state minimum wage requirements. And again, any cost of living adjustments. Not all of these classifications are active in the city, but certainly any that are will be adjusted with cost of living and minimum wage adjustments.
I was going to say, do we really have a dance fitness instructor?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lee, I couldn't hear you.
Do we have a dance fitness instructor?
No, we do not, sir.
I think so.
That's a good example of one that's not currently utilized, yes. Yeah, to your, to your point, all of those programming in the recreation area, I've had conversation with our Parks Department, and we've gone back and forth on those. We've decided to keep those on the list with hopes of having some programming in that area, but we are currently not utilizing those.
Sure.
And we would need a place to have them.
What's that?
We will need, would need a place to have dance instruction because no parks no longer available.
I know where you're going with that. Yeah, that's right. We don't have a current facility for that, yes. Yep.
Any other comments or questions from commission? Comments or questions from citizens? Ordinance number O-19-23, first reading.
An, an ordinance to amend Chapter 32 of the Pickwa Code ordinances.
Good evening, commission. This ordinance is to amend Chapter 32 to combine the Board of Zoning Appeals with the Planning Commission and to combine the Tree Committee into the Park Board. In each case, the subject bodies currently facilitate services pertaining to similar matters, and by combining the two bodies, the two subject bodies with one another, it will allow for a more efficient delivery of the services provided, thereby being more effective in accommodating the requests that are presented to those bodies by the citizens and developers and landowners, and also eliminate the need for duplicative staff service supporting two separate bodies that are doing very similar functions. I put before you this evening, unfortunately, when teams, when you print from that, there's a hiccup where it converts the document to PDF and eliminates the markup. So I put the markup version in front of you so you could see the actual changes in the ordinance, and that's what will be posted from here forward.
Has the Tree Committee been informed of the proposed change?
I know myself, I briefed the BZA and the Planning Commission, and they were both very receptive to the thought. I believe Amy has talked to the Park Board, and I've talked to the staff liaison for the Tree Committee, but I don't know if they've had any communications with them just yet.
You have several very emphatic members of the Tree Committee, and I would suggest that we at least advise them of what's being proposed.
Yes, we have a BZA meeting November 28th, Planning Commission December 11th, Park Board November 29th, and then somewhere in there we'll also have a conversation with the Tree Committee so that we can answer specific questions and make sure that they're entirely comfortable with what's proposed. Again, the initial brief of the two bodies, I spoke with at least, they saw the merit and were actually very supportive of the idea of doing this.
Let me ask this question. If the Planning Commission passes something and someone wants to appeal to the BZA, doesn't it just then go back to the same?
Planning Commission decisions are not appealed to the BZA. They would be appealed to the Court of Common Pleas, I revise Code 2506.
Just want to make that clear.
Wouldn't they eventually get back to zoning appeals after the Planning Commission made a decision on something and somebody's been living under that for a year or two, and then they wanted to perhaps make a modified structure that's a little bit outside what was decided on for that zone? Wouldn't it then go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals? Which would, in this case, be, be the same people who had made that original decision. And I think Commissioner Lee's and I are both concerned about kind of a conflict of interest, you know, who do you appeal to? If it's just the same people, is it really, is it really an appeal?
Yeah, I think the best way to respond to that is to take a moment and talk about what the function of those two bodies are. Planning Commission is looking at land use entitlements, and oftentimes if someone is looking to develop a subdivision, that's where the preliminary plating process would be reviewed and approved, and then the final plat would be recommended. They would view it for concurrence with the preliminary plat that was recommended, and then the final plat would be recommended for approval and forwarded to the city commission for the, for the formal action of approving street dedications or lot layouts, things of that nature. And in the instance of there being a need for, say, a lot to be reduced in terms of the code requirement for the frontage, currently that would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So now you've got two separate bodies looking at the same document in essence and acting on an item that is, there's one project or one request at hand. So by bringing them together, you're, you're creating a more efficient and effective process for the end user of the, of the boards that, the services that those boards provide. You're not eliminating any opportunity to appeal. Rather, you're pulling together two bodies that are acting on very similar items in many cases and enhancing the knowledge set of both bodies by them sharing or communicating with one another.
Being that this is the first reading, perhaps I'll, I'll come around to it, but I, I would think that maybe it'd be prudent to separate these into two separate things. I think the, the Tree Committee and the Parks Committee, I think that makes a lot of sense. The, the planning and the board, the zoning board is a little bit more questionable. I might need to walk down that path a little bit further with you to, to understand that, but I would hate for the, the Tree Committee and the Planning Committee to fail simply because there was something else, role didn't do it.
The Tree Committee, I know, has a hard time getting a quorum, so folding it into the parks...
Makes a lot of sense.
Makes a lot, a lot of sense, so.
We're, we're currently in the same position with the BZA. Ability to have a quorum has become a challenge, so that is also rooted in this recommendation that by having one body with more solid representation or membership, you sometimes can avoid those circumstances, not always. But now you don't have two bodies to populate, so it, it makes it a little bit easier to keep one functioning body intact.
I guess I would invite citizen comment the next couple of weeks here to, you know, anybody who's dealt with either of these boards, what do you guys feel? Definitely curious to hear that.
And it appears that the only appeal process after the Planning Commission's decision is through the Court of Common Pleas.
That is correct. So same thing with the BZA. If a person were appealing to the BZA currently and they didn't like the decision rendered by the BZA, the next step would be the Court of Common Pleas. So the same mechanism is available for consideration of any decision rendered at a local government level, whether it's the city commission, Planning Commission, or BZA. If the individual's not satisfied with the outcome, the Court of Common Pleas is there for pursuit of some other outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other comments or questions? Resolution number R-127-23.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Miami Valley Risk Management Association for purchase of insurance.
Commissioners, your approval of this resolution will allow the city to continue our partnership with Moverma to provide our liability and risk management and property insurance coverage with Miami Valley Risk Management Association. It is a municipal member-driven risk management pool of 21 cities, and our coverage is provided through Alliant, the insurance broker and management advisor to the board. And I wanted to add that I'm, I'm currently the board member for the city, and Jerry coming on as the finance director, he would serve as the alternate and maybe even sometimes primary board member for the city.
Are we anticipating any increase in cost for the risk management insurance?
It is an increase over last year's premium amount, yes.
How much of an increase?
I, I don't know that right offhand, Commissioner Vedder, I can find that out for you. I want to say it's, it's over 6%, but I, don't quote me on that, that's...
There will be an increase?
It is an increase over last year's amount, yes.
Did we shop around?
Pardon?
Did we shop around?
We didn't quote, we did not quote, but we, we have considered another provider, Commissioner Lee, specifically travelers we're interested in learning more about. We did meet with Moverma and asked them to provide full disclosure of our profile to look at our return on our participation with them, but we did not seek quotes from others this year.
Does the, does the premium, or does the premium sound like it's in line with other cities that are dealing with the same thing?
Yeah, so our, our premium, again, we're, we're in a pool, and so our premium is based on our loss ratio, and so our current experience in claims, and so it's, it's a formula-based premium, and so it's, it's pretty much in line with our claims experience. And our current coverage limits, you know, our property, so we have our power equipment and whatnot, and so what our coverage is based on in our claims experience, it seems to be aligned with what we're, what we're experiencing in terms of coverage, yes.
Are there any more questions or comments from commission? Do our citizens have any questions or comments? I move that we adopt resolution number R-127-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number R-127-23 is approved. Resolution number R-128-23.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Spring Creek Township Board of Trustees, Township Trustees.
Passage this resolution authorizes the Finance Department to pay the Spring Creek Township property taxes collected on property that was annexed by the city. This payment is in accordance with agreement that the city has with the township.
Are there questions or comments from commissioners?
For how much longer is this agreement in effect?
Five more, or seven more years.
I'd have to look, I think it was another ten, ten years or so, I can get that figure exact for you and let you know.
When was the agreement initially entered into?
Last year, in December of twenty-two, and it went back to tax year seventeen, I believe.
Commissioner, this actually is a result of, what happened is, is somewhere around two thousand and sixteen, the city annexed, well, the city had removed from the township all the property it had annexed over since the nineteen seventies or eighties, and what happened is, is there was a quirk in the state law, and they changed the law that made it so that we had to pay the township, the tax revenue lost on those properties, even though they were annexed for forty years, and that went to the Supreme Court of Ohio. So what this is, is it's part of the payment of property taxes that are allocated towards the, we've paid, I think we paid three out of that last payment, it may be two, we have these two, and it lasts a total of twelve years, twelve years of tax years, and I'm not, I want to say we're at five, but Jerry, it may be four, but take twelve, whatever we have paid off, how many years we have paid off of it, and so this will happen every year, it reduces in value every year, there's a formula, a percentage, and we reduce the value, it has a, it's a statutory formula, but it reduces over time also.
Any other questions or comments from commission? Citizen question or comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution number R dash one twenty-eight dash twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution number R dash one twenty-eight dash twenty-three is approved. We'll move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening Mayor and Commission, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that attended the town hall last Wednesday, we had sixty residents in attendance, many had opportunity to get their questions answered and engage with the partner agencies that were there. We'll be providing weekly updates on the outcome of not just that meeting, but any ongoing testing or anything to do with the particular training facility. I'd like to focus on some really great things that have been going on over the last two weeks and look forward to some things that are going to be happening over the holidays. The first one is the November eleventh grand illumination, I don't know if everybody was able to attend that, but it really symbolized a true hallmark moment for the town. I was there when they had the illumination, I stayed around until about nine-thirty that night, and there were still people milling about downtown, taking pictures and having conversations, sitting at benches under the lights, and it's that kind of activity that we really want to induce for the community, because it really resonates with what people want in terms of placemaking. Right after grand illumination, we had the horse parade, there were forty units that participated, we had changed up the actual route of the horse parade so that they would be closer together and provide better viewing for the public, again, was very well attended, it was better than the last two years I'd attended it. On November nineteenth, I attended the Holiday Cabaret with the Friends of the Pickwa Public Library, and I'm remiss to say that during that event, they announced that Ruth Kuhn will be stepping down after twelve years as Chair of that Friends of the Public, Pickwa Public Library, she was instrumental last three years I was here in terms of, you know, working with the city to get the event hosted there, and it is truly a landmark event in the town, it just celebrates that space, the acoustics are amazing, and the folks, they're lucky enough to get tickets there, really enjoyed it, including myself, but I just think that that's another, you know, banner moment in our town that we need to celebrate and make sure that people take advantage of when they get the opportunity to get tickets. And lastly, over the last three years, there've been a lot of questions about restoring the uplighting at the Fort Pickwa Plaza, and so we've been working through that, and I got confirmation that our contractor should be completed by next weekend with the exterior illumination of Fort Pickwa Plaza. We've done street lighting upgrades to LED as well as some of the facility lights, getting rid of the high-pressure sodium orange glow with the Christmas lights and having the uplighting on the structure, it should really be a focal point, starting with the downtown from here forward. It just, there's a lot of really great things going on, we're in the process of hiring a public information officer, and as you'll see going into next year, we really want to focus on celebrating the great things that the community does and the folks that not only work here, but play here and live here, and so we want to get those stories out in social media and really celebrate the unique hallmark character that we have of our town that doesn't really reside in many other places around Ohio. And I just wanted to end on a high note with that and ask everybody to attend the events of next week, and which I'm sure you'll speak to, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Vice Mayor Lee?
I thank people who are coming to these meetings and speaking up and asking questions, pass that down, appreciate interested citizens interested in their government and holding truth to power, you know, making sure that we're doing what we say, and asking good questions, I have no problem with that, I think people have the right to do that, and I like seeing citizens being involved, and I'd like to thank everybody who's asked questions about what has happened out at the training center there and ESRG, thank them for bringing all that information to light and getting the ball rolling on it, and you see I drink water up here, I've never been afraid to drink the water, I'm not, I mean, and the test that we got back says that the water is okay, and it's safe, and I'm going to continue to drink the water, so, that's different than Kool-Aid, so, I'm not drinking the Kool-Aid, but I am drinking the water, so. Basketball season's about to start, so if you're interested in basketball, Pickwa basketball will be out there and going, and lame and basketball is getting started as well, so, I guess that's all I've got, I appreciate you guys all coming out, so thank you.
Mr. Vetter?
Thank you, I have a couple things, number one, if you haven't checked out the streetlights in the city for a while, you should, the electric department is about to complete the, changing out of the sodium electric streetlights and putting in the new ones, and I think there are only a couple streets left to do, so that's been a multi-year project, and I think the electric department needs to be really commended for their work. If you're not familiar, it's a cost-saving device, and their longevity is, increases the activity of those streetlights, and so that's a great project. I attended the Atomic City Display, which is occurring in the second floor of the library, I'm old enough to remember when that plant was built, and the comment that I will share is that when that plant was being built and after it first opened, we had citizens claiming that they were getting cancer from the atomic plant coming through their electric wires, so I thought was kind of an interesting kind of a comment to make. There is an upcoming meeting for the Hans Pavilion Preservation Folks, it will occur January the eighteenth at the Pickwa Y MCA, and more information for that will be forthcoming. I also attended the horse parade and had a great time, my comment was the same as yours, Paul, the crowds were really deep and I was really impressed with that. I continue to be interested in a first-time homebuyers project, and I know that our staff member who was heading that up has left, and we're in the process of trying to take care of that, but I'm still interested in that. I am in touch with the Bethany Center in reference to sexual offenders who show up at the cold shelter, and I think that, my opinion is, that we need to have conversation with Troy, because they have the same problem, and so I think that Troy's cold shelter plans are slightly different than Pickwa's, but I think there is some common ground for us to talk about what happens when we have sexual offenders using the Bethany Center as their address, and we all know that's inappropriate and we need a different alternative. The last thing I wanted to talk about is something that I've discussed with police chief in reference to runaway children, I had a parishioner who asked what was the status of runaway children, evidently they had seen a program on TV indicating that a large number, maybe a thousand children were listed on the runaway list, and a couple things that we have to be careful with, number one, if a child runs away from home on their own, comes back the next day and runs away again, now we have two, and so the counting system is not real helpful. As of this moment, we have no runaway children that are known in Pickwa, and so I think additional questions about the status of runaway children should be addressed to the police chief, so that is my end, thank you.
Thank you, good report. Commissioner Holman?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, hope everyone has a safe week, safe travels, and gets to see their family, and again, I'll echo Commissioner Lee, thank everybody for coming out tonight, keep coming out to these meetings, and thank you to everybody who came out and asked questions last Wednesday about the battery burning, keep asking questions, thank you.
Thank you. There were four ribbon-cutting ceremonies that I attended, Poco Loco in our downtown area, the Veterans Center, Atomic City Trail Bridge, which is out on, near Goodrich Giles Park, we also have new owners of Can't Stop Running, and new owners, of course, you probably already know Susie's Big Dipper, there are also lots of things going on at the mall, so check it out. I also want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and don't forget that there is Small Business Saturday occurring this Saturday, the twenty-fifth, and downtown Pickwa merchants have a holiday open house on December first and second, Christmas on the Green is December first from six to nine, and the Pickwa Holiday Parade is December second. Lots of things happening, great, positive, wonderful things happening in Pickwa, and I hope that you attend these great downtown events and support our local merchants. That's all I had for this evening, a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, we are adjourned.